So that's us. So, so welcome. And this, this week we are continuing on with Colossians. And it's Colossians, chapter one, and it's verses 15 through to 23, 15 through to 23. And just as you look that up, I'm going to give you a bit of a recap on last week. If you want to watch a last week's talk and look at all the, the transcript of last week, you go onto our website, theunitedparish.org.uk. And then under, there's a section called latest news. And, and under that latest news, you'll see the, you'll, you'll see the, the talk from last week. So last week, we, we kind of did an overview of the book of Colossians. We learnt that Paul had written his letter from a prison, prison cell to the church in Colossae. And a church that he didn't set up himself. And, and the followers there needed to be reminded about the whole sufficiency, the whole supremacy of God. Because you might remember from last week that the Colossians were being influenced to kind of fill all the gaps in life, or to kind of add to their beliefs, so that their belief, their Christian belief wasn't sufficient, and that they needed to kind of add other influences into it on top of God. And Paul is teaching them through his letter that they don't need anything other than God. They had forgotten the simple truth of chapter one, verses 13 and to 14. And those words were, "For he has rescued us from the dominion of darkness and brought us into the kingdom of the Son that he loves, in whom we have redemption, the forgiveness of sins." That was a little passage that I decided last week that I would take and commit to, to, you know, to memorize for this week ahead. And it's great because it's now, it's now in there. But for us, we need to remember the truth of the gospel. It is only, and it's all about Jesus, and how he has opened the way to the Father by reconciling all the things on the cross, nothing less, nothing more. And we're finished by thinking about what it is to live a life worthy of God. A worthy life looks like a transformed heart. I was speaking to someone this week when I, when I was doing my Alpha One to Ones. And we were having that conversation about, you know, the, the, the transformation that takes place, that all things are new. And, and then that overflows into how we treat other people, what we maybe say, and our attitude towards the things God has asked us to be involved in for his mission. And, and then we looked, we took away possible actions. And last week, we thought about how to pray, how to maybe memorize a passage in scripture, maybe to write out the gospel story to make sure that we're not adding things to it, a bit like the Colossians. And to go out and show our love of God to someone else. And, or to send someone a little thank you note, the thanking for how they brought us and to, to Jesus, or connected us, or pointed us to Jesus. And so, and that was another thing, I contacted one of the guys that was, and, and his wife, and who had been heavily involved in my, my early years of coming to God. And I, I wrote a letter thanking them for that. So before we go into today's passage, I wanted to ask you, how did any of you that were, were on the call last week, how did you get on with that? Did any of you, it's not to embarrass you in any way, but did any of you take up anything and try to do something?
Well, I did the first couple about the prayer, thinking about things that God, Jesus could change my life and make me better. Also, like you remembered, because my memory sometimes can go, so I did commit to trying to remember that passage. So I think I have done so. If you want to test me, I'm fine. He has delivered us from the power of, of darkness and conveyed us into the kingdom of the Son of his love, in whom redemption, through his blood, the forgiveness of sins.
Yeah.
Colossians 1:13 and 14.
Yeah. And, and you know, something, the, the purpose of that for, for, for me is that Will and I talk about a lot. The day we went into the nursing home, and these folks who you didn't hear, you didn't get anything out of them. And then whenever we started opening up scripture, started to sing, it just came alive, you know? And that, that's what I'm thinking about it in, in my later life, that I can recall scripture. Anybody else try anything this past week?
Yes. Whenever I, I ring people, I'm one of the parish visitors, I always try and give them a verse from the Bible and encourage them to seek God, you know, and just, just share a bit of, of what I've done in the past.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, George. So, and in terms of everything that you need this morning, you, you can simply listen. There's going to be lots of different questions. But, and online again, on that latest news page, there's a little booklet that has a little participants guide that allows you to follow. And, you know, don't worry about it so much today, but it kind of gives you the little points. And again, my notes will help you as well. So, and so what I want to start off with in this passage today is I want to start off with the big, the, the kind of big idea around today. So from this, this passage, and it's that Jesus is supreme over all things. But if we are to consider how this study today will affect us, it has to do something to us. It can't just be something that we listen to, and then we go off and do our, our own thing the rest of the day. So it needs, it needs to affect our heads, it needs to affect our hearts, and it needs to affect our lives. So in terms of our head, my hope today is that your head, our heads, know Jesus as being supreme over everything. Okay? And our heart should feel secure in Jesus's authority over all things, rooted in the gospel, and our lives should change because we'll stand firm in our faith. Whatever the situation is, that we'd be faithful to God and obedient to his word, regardless of what the circumstances are. So if we think about the word supremacy or being supreme, here's what the dictionary describes it as. It says, "It's the highest in rank or authority. Paramount, it is sovereign, it's chief, it's of the highest quality, the, the degree, character, and importance." So think for a minute about the ways today where the word supreme is used. What, what ways is the word supreme used today? Think of examples.
The best, the best of the best. If you're shopping and someone is advertising as supreme, it's the best of the best.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose in sport, you say that man's performance was absolutely supreme.
That's right.
If you're a big fan of soccer or something, you'd say, you know, Ronnie O'Sullivan was absolutely supreme.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very loosely used often.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you, in this past week, for anyone that, well, you, 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 you had to be, you had to see it anyway because of the publicity, but the American, the USA elections that took place, and the place now that the Supreme Court has, this kind of highest, the highest court in, in the land there. And they call the Supreme Court. For me, and I like Star Wars. I, I had sit with the boys and watched Star Wars a lot. So there's this character called the Supreme Leader. And so, so yeah, but supreme can be used in many different ways, maybe some in the wrong ways. In that if you do a search on Google for the word supreme, the first three full pages of searches is for a clothing brand called Supreme. So you know, that, that's what, that's what's ranked at the minute as being what Supreme, it's clothes. So you can see how things have changed.
Thought us neither could be singers along with her.
Yes. Supreme, yeah.
I put it into Google last night, supremacy and Jesus, and it came up with hoodie t-shirts with Supreme Jesus written on them and baseball caps, Supreme Jesus.
It's that, it's, there's a clothing brand called Supreme, and it has all these different things. So, and, but obviously biblical supremacy is referring to God's authority, his rulership, and, and his power over all creation. And now remember the context again of what we're about to read. And Paul is teaching that there, to, to the Colossians who are trying to add these different things into their, their beliefs, that there's nothing else required in life other than God. So could I ask someone to read for me? And it doesn't matter what translation. If you can read to me, Colossians, chapter one, verses 15 to 23.
Read it to us.
Go ahead, Sophie.
Christ is the visible image of the invisible God. He existed before God made anything at all, and is supreme over all creation. Christ is the one through whom God created everything in heaven and earth. He made the things we can see and the things we can't see, kings, kingdoms, rulers, and authorities. Everything has been created through him and for him. He existed before everything else began, and he holds all creation together. Christ is the head of the church, which is his body. He is the first of all, we will rise from the dead. So he is first in everything. For God in all his fullness was pleased to live in Christ, and by him God reconciled everything to himself. He made peace with everything in heaven and on earth by means of his blood on the cross. This includes you, who were once far away from God. You were his enemies, separated from him by your evil thoughts and actions. Yet now he has brought you back as his friends. He has done this through his death on the cross in his own human body. As a result, he has brought you into the very presence of God, and you are holy and blameless as you stand before him without a single fault. But you must continue to believe this truth and stand in it firmly. Don't drift away from the assurance you receive when you heard the good news. The good news has been preached all over the world, and I, Paul, have been appointed by God to proclaim it. Do you want more?
No, that's, that's it. Just up to verse 23. Thank you. What translation was that, Sophie?
New Living.
New Living. Very good. And so I'd said, I'd said last week that in terms of how we're going to do these Bible studies, I know slightly different to maybe the ones that you've been used to on midweeks, is that some weeks it's going to be me doing a lot of talking, and some weeks there's going to be a little bit of video added. Today, we're going to add about 12 minutes now of video from a guy from America. He, he works mainly, this guy called Louis Giglio, good Italian name. And he, he works a lot with students in universities to kind of reach, reach out to them with the gospel. And as always, Americans, and there are things that you listen to and you think, oh, that's, you know, there, there they go again. If you put that on, if you put that filter on, that's okay. There'll be one thing that I'll want to talk about in this video afterwards, and that I'll want to explain. But what I'm going to do now, if you've not been used to this before, is I'm going to share my screen with all of you. Okay? And then I'm going to play the video. Okay? So you should now see on screen, my, my screen. And it should be on your screen saying session two, verses 15 to 23. Does it?
Yes.
If your video goes funny through it, and you just, we'll see you back in 12 minutes. Okay? Because there's no way that I can, that I can fix it. But if you just simply sit and watch this.
Welcome back to session two of our study of the book of Colossians. And in this session today, we are going to see more clearly than in any other place in scripture probably, how God highlights the supremacy and the sufficiency of Jesus Christ. It's interesting, a theologian, Lightfoot, says about the book of Colossians. He says, "In this book, the doctrine of the person of Christ is stated with more precision and fullness than in any other of the epistles of the apostle Paul." In other words, in all of the writings of Paul, and I would dare say in a vast majority of the writings of scripture period, Colossians lifts up, amplifies, underlines, highlights the supremacy of Jesus Christ. And we see that in this text today in some absolutely incredible ways. The first thing we see in the text today is that Jesus is the originator of everything. You could say it in a different way, Jesus is the original. In fact, everything we see, everything in all of creation, in the great cosmos around us, you and me, everything that exists, exists because of Jesus. I remember when I first got my head around that, it was such a clarifying reality for me. Because I know that the scripture opens with the phrase, it says, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." But in Colossians, chapter one, we actually see that it was Jesus, who was the agent of the Trinity, who created the heavens and the earth. It says it like this. I'd love to just read the text with you. It says, "He," speaking of Jesus, "is the image of the invisible God, the firstborn over all creation." But look at the next verse, verse 16, "For by Jesus all things were created." And it comes down to the end of the verse and says, "All things were created by him and for him." So Jesus isn't just a nice guy that came walking through the Holy Land, doing miracles and teaching incredible wisdom. Jesus is the originator of the universe. In other words, when God spoke and the universe came into existence, Jesus spoke and the universe came into existence. We're in a neighborhood in the cosmos right now called the Milky Way Galaxy. It's our cul-de-sac, if you will, in the universe. Our galaxy, one of hundreds of billions of other galaxies in the known universe. In our galaxy, the Milky Way, hundreds of billions of stars. We look up in the night sky, we can see thousands of stars, but there are hundreds of billions of stars in our galaxy. And this Jesus that we're discovering, this Jesus that's changing and transforming our lives, this Jesus that we're going to see is living in us and living through us, he's the one who created it all. And what does that matter to you and me? So I'm not into science, I'm not into astronomy, all that stuff really, I don't get it. Well, I'll tell you why it matters to you and me, because this one phrase, "All things were created by Jesus", and "all things were created for Jesus," that phrase answers to the biggest questions in humanity. And that is, does my life matter? And why am I here? These are the existential questions of humanity. Do I matter in this great cosmos, all these hundreds of billions of galaxies and seven plus billion people on planet Earth? Does my life matter? And second question we're all asking is, why am I here? And Jesus says, "I can answer that for you. You're, you matter because I created you." So your worth isn't in the way that you look, your worth isn't in what you own, your worth isn't in what you can do, your worth isn't in some accomplishment or achievement. Your worth is found in the fact that you were created by Almighty God. You were created by Jesus Christ. He designed you. He imagined you. He fashioned you together in your mother's womb. But that second question, why am I here? It's answered right in the text. "All things were created by him and for him." Our highest purpose, our reason for being. The reason we're breathing air on this planet today is because we were designed to be in a relationship with God. And we were designed uniquely in such a way that we could glorify him in the way that we live our lives. So we see that we find our value in the fact that we were created by him. But the second question is answered, and that we were created for him. So we find our reason for being. And what is it? We exist to be in a relationship with God, and we're created in his image. We're created in the very likeness of God, so that we can know him. We're redeemed by Christ, so that we can live lives that glorify him. So right at the beginning, we see that the supremacy of God is first seen in the fact that he is the originator of everything that is, and he's the originator of you and me. But the second word we're going to see today is that he's the sustainer. This next verse is so powerful to me. It says, "Not only did Jesus make everything, but in him all things hold together." So it's not as if he were some absentee creator, and he made a world, and off the world goes, and he's not interested anymore. In the same way that he created the world, the scripture says, "Jesus is in the flow with you and me today." And he's the one holding the cosmos together. And more importantly, he's the one who's holding you together today and holding us together today. You may have heard me talk in the past about this little protein molecule called laminin. And a little backstory on that, I was preaching a series at the church I was attending at the time several years ago on the glory of God in the human body, just looking inside our bodies and seeing all the mystery, the wonder, the miracle power of God. And I was on a speaking tour, I was in Tyler, Texas, and at the end of my message, I met a microbiologist at the university down the street. And we talked for a minute after the deal, and he said, "So what are you working on? What's next?" I said, "Well, I'm going to be back home at the church I go to in a few weeks. I'm going to do a message on the glory of God in the human body." And at the time, I didn't know he was a microbiologist at the university down the street. And he said, "Oh, that's great. What are you going to talk about?" I said, "I want to talk about this, about the human eye, and this about when the human heart beats, and this, and this other thing." And he said, "Great. What's your big light closing? What's your left hook at the end of your message?" And I said, "I, I don't have a left hook at the end of the message." He goes, "I've got your left hook at the end of your message. It's laminin." I was like, "Laminin? Can you spell that for me?" He takes his card out, he writes it on the back, L-A-M-I-N-I-N. Like, "Laminin." Okay, great. What is it? He goes, "It's a protein molecule." And I was like, "Can you explain a little more?" He goes, "A base molecule, you know, the protein based molecules. It's a cell adhesion molecule." I said, "A cell adhesion molecule?" He says, "I'll put it down in the simplest of terms. It's like the rebar of the human body. It holds our bodies together, this protein molecule." I said, "Cool. I'll look it up." He said, "Google it." So when I Googled it, there were two images there, and when I looked at those images, I could not believe it. It was a left hook, all right, because laminin, the protein structure of laminin is in the shape of a cross. I mean, you don't have to look at it from a side angle or have, as we talked about in session one, secret knowledge or some insider information. Anyone who looks at laminin and says, "That's a cross." And I thought, "How amazing." It took me right back to this verse in Colossians, chapter one. This is what it says in verse 17, "Jesus is before all things, and in him all things hold together." And then I realized, we're going to see just another line or two, that the cross of Christ is what holds us in our relationship with God. But literally in our body are billions of microscopic crosses right now, or microscopic cross-shaped protein molecules right now, that are holding our bodies together. It's not proof of anything. It's not scientific proof of the person of God. It's just one of those God coincidences, that a creator and an originator of everything just put a little trace down into the DNA of who we are, so that one day we would discover that our bodies are being held together by a symbol that we've come to love and enjoy, because it brings us peace with God. He's the originator of it all. He's the sustainer of it all. The text says, "He's the leader of it all." He's the head of the church, the head of the body. He's the first born from among the dead. He's the first one out of the tomb. He was the first one to experience resurrection life. And therefore, he's the leader of this church. He's the leader of you and me. He is the supreme leader of all of us, and it all points to him. And then the last thing that we see in this text is that he's the peacemaker between you and me, in a holy God. It says at the end of the text, "That in him and through him, God is reconciling all things to himself, things on earth and things in heaven, making peace through Jesus' blood shed on a cross." So not only did he make the world, somehow Jesus came into the world. Not only did he speak the galaxies into existence, he chose to come in human form onto this planet we call Earth, so that he could live a perfect life, give his life as a perfect sacrifice, so that a just God who loves you and me could forgive us of our sin, establish a brand new relationship with us, and extend peace to us. Those of us who had walked away, a holy God extending peace to us now through the blood, the shed blood, the sacrifice, the gift of Jesus Christ. He is supreme, and he is sufficient, because he's the only one who made the world. He's the only one holding you together right now. He's the only one who has that place as being leader of it all. And he's the only one through whose innocent blood we can have peace with Almighty God. We celebrate today, in this text, the supremacy and the sufficiency of Jesus Christ.
Okay. And so, so that's, that's Louis. And, and I will come on to one of the little things that he, he said, and that I, I just want to, to place a little bit of caution on. And, but just remember, remember some of the things he said. He said, "Jesus is the originator of everything, so everything exists because of him. And Jesus is the sustainer. All things hold together through him." And all I would say to you is that his little illustration on the idea of laminin, and laminin definitely exists within the body. If you do Google it, you'll see that the structure of the, of the molecule is in the shape of a cross. And, but for me, as I look at that, it, it gives us a good comparison of what Jesus is. And I think Louis tried to say, he wasn't trying to say anything more than, you know, God has placed something in it and for us in the DNA structure. It is one of those godly, godly kind of moments. A number of people who have written, scientists who have written about what Louis has said, have ripped him apart on it because they've seen other molecules that don't look like a cross. So I'm just telling you to hold that, hold that gently. However, verse 17 tells us that Jesus does hold everything together in creation. And then he said, "Jesus is the leader of the church," and then finally, "Jesus is the peacemaker." So as we look at this, at these verses, verses 15 through to 23, are there any other observations about Jesus that are in these verses? So take, take the reading at the minute, and just work your way through it, and see if you can find anything else that we see here about Jesus. So begin at verse 15. And I'll give you a clue to get you started, because obviously I've had the chance to do my homework on this. But look at the opening line of, of verse 15. So what do we know from Jesus from that opening verse 15?
Christ and Jesus are the same person. It's the same entity. Christ is exactly like God.
He's, he's made in the image of the invisible God. Yeah. So if we want to know what God looks like, one of the things, in one of our other Bible studies, we're, we're looking at the, we're going to be looking at the nature and character of God. And to make it really simple, if you want to know what God looks like, then what you need to do is you need to look at the character of Jesus, because Paul is saying here, he is the image of the invisible God. Okay? Can you find anything else in here? Have, have a look down at verse 22. What can we say about Jesus in that verse 22?
I suppose we could say that we too are, once we commit ourselves to the Lord, we're, you know, in the image of Christ, really. We're brothers, like, like, like Jesus. We, we come into the, the family of God.
Yeah.
Brothers through him.
Yeah. And we're, through him, we're presented holy, holy and blameless. But it, but it also makes the point here that Jesus is the complete and sufficient sacrifice between man and God. He is now reconciled in his fleshly body through death. And then if we go on from what Georgia said there, and if we look at verse 23 then, what, what does it say about us in terms of our security?
If you stay steadfast in your faith, then you, if you don't give up, you've heard the good news, and stay steadfast, God will be with you.
Yeah.
Born again.
Yeah, born, born again. There's that, there's that sense of being, you know, that in and through Jesus there, we are rooted as long as we stay focused on him. So, and so if Jesus is described, we'll go back to verse 15. If Jesus is described as the image of the invisible God in verse 15, what ways do we see this displayed in his character on earth? So just think about the life of Jesus and think about how his character and what he does every day of his life in, in ministry. How does that reflect on the character of God?
Loving God.
Do I say it again, George?
Loving and forgiving God.
Loving and forgiven. Yep.
Compassionate.
Compassionate, yeah. Said, whenever he looked on the crowd, he had compassion. And that word compassion is about, it's about, it's about the guts moving, literally that he, that he has, you know, brings well, something up inside of him. So that says a lot about God. Anything else?
He's the power over illness, over death, over the big things that are cruel to us in life. It shows his supremacy over that aspect of, of life.
And then the only other thing that I could think of, um, at this stage was the idea of he fulfilled the prophecies that were declared through, through the people in the Old Testament. And, and now he becomes the fulfiller of, of all of that. So in, in verse 15, Paul says that Jesus, well, in my translation, it says that Jesus is the firstborn of all creation. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Firstborn of all creation. And, and so just a wee bit of clarity on that, because there, there's a danger of thinking that this verse means that God created Jesus. And, and probably on a, on a big theological topic like that, we could have that, we could have that conversation about, you know, being, you know, firstborn of all creation. And the early church councils deemed that, what, what was written here as heretical. And but we still see it popping up amongst groups such as Jehovah's Witnesses. This idea that, that there's God, but Jesus is, is almost something else. He's not, he, 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 he isn't the person of God that was there at the time of creation. He, he isn't God, that, that, you know, it's, it's something, it's something else. There's, he is, he's almost like a follower of God, nothing else. And from, from reading the concordances in this, this term firstborn actually means in the Greek that Jee, it was Jesus' position of privilege back to this whole thing of supremacy. So whenever he says firstborn, it's more about his authority in being firstborn. And because we see in verse 16, then it says that all things were made through him and for him.
Does it not say, sorry, does it not say in the Bible too, that he was there before all creation, before anything? Because he spoke and all things were created.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, but they're, you know, that's what I'm saying. If you take Jo, you know, John one, in the beginning was the word and the word was God and the word was with God. You know, so, so all I'm saying is, is that there's a debate out there that read that and, and take it and reinterpret it as being, well, God was formed, but God, God made, you know, God made beings and whatever, of which one was, was Jesus. Instead of the sense of, no, Jesus, you, Jesus is supreme. He is the lord of lords. So it, it's just, yeah, you, you definitely can back it up, George, with other passages. So let, let's now apply that authority in our own lives. What things does Jesus have authority over in our lives? Now, it's slightly more personal question. You know, what, what is it that he has authority over in our, in our own lives?
Absolutely everything. I mean, he has given us free will. Uh, because otherwise there wouldn't be, some people would argue, there wouldn't be much purpose in life i- if we're like clones and had to obey Jesus all the time. He's given us free will, but he's also given us the power and the grace to do what he wants us to do.
Okay.
We must make that decision ourselves to do it.
Okay. And can, can I, can I ask therefore, and because you answered it, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of bounce it back to you, George?
Yeah.
Is there anything therefore in your life that you find difficult to place under Jesus' authority?
Of course. I mean, even Paul himself says, you know, the things that I, I want to do, I do not, you know, and the things I do, I do not, I want to do. You know, we're, we're human beings and we always will be, and we're fallible. You know, we, we don't know all the answers and we never will know.
No, and, and therefore I think my point is that we cannot say that every aspect of our lives is under the authority of Jesus. Because of free will, there are going to be things where we say, no, actually, I'm going to make the decision on this one. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take this to the Lord. It, it happens to me every day. And because of what you've just said about that fallenness, and that, that, that articulates that, yes, there's that desire for Jesus to be the authority over everything. But because of our brokenness, there are going to be things in our life where we find it difficult. What, 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 you know, if I'm asking all of you, what, what are the kinds of things that you find difficult to place under, um, under, under God's authority? Just, you know, in terms of your daily life?
Possibly what you want to go out and eat or entertain, go to pictures. You might think, God, well, that's not gonna, that's not a big issue for God. I, I would like to go to see that Star Wars movie. Or I would like to have a curry tonight instead of a sensible meat two veg, whatever. So those things you sort of delegate to yourself, thinking, well, that's not to do with God. Uh, that, that'll, you'll pigeonhole that to decisions that I can make that I don't feel are religious or, or have God's influence in, uh, possibly.
I, I suppose, one, one of the things I'd like to say on that is, as a person who absolutely loves curries, um, I, I hope you're not saying that, that, that curries are wrong. I don't think you're saying that, sure, you're not.
No, no, there's, there's times in, in my life I'll have a, a, a sort of a salad binge in the summer or whatever, trying to eat sensibly. But there'd be times of weakness or whatever, maybe once or twice a month, I'll fancy something different. And, and I don't ask God, oh, is this, is this gonna be good? I know it's not gonna be good for me because there's so many calories in it, whatever, but it is nice. And it's something maybe that I wouldn't lay on God's plate, if you would pardon me.
And I know that for me, one of the, the big challenges is, um, releasing my children into God's hands, um, on parental issues. And how, how I, how I deal with those two. Last night in, in our house group was looking at the prayer course. And one of the things was, you know, about the whole thing of praying over your children. And, and, and I have to admit that, that I, 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 I don't do it enough. And because I feel that I, as a parent, I need to be responsible for absolutely everything. And in fact, yes, I am responsible, but I need to place those things before God, but because of his authority. Any, anything else, guys? Any other points that you think are?
Yeah, I, I think that we, we tend to so easily forget that we live constantly, 24/7, so on, in God's presence. And that we are living for him or, or, as, as we started off there and you said, our reason for being here is to be in a relationship with him. That doesn't stop at any point in our lives. And that awareness of living in, in a relationship with him all, all the time, no matter what we're doing, whether we're going to see Star Wars or eating curry, it doesn't really matter what we're doing.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it's that awareness of what is with us, we are with him. This is the way the setup is. And it, it's that sort of, this, this is where we are and this is what we are.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We forget that very easily.
Yeah, it's, it's almost in the, it's almost in the, the, the daily day to day things that we just get on and do. And where, um, God wants to be part, he, he wants to be involved in all those, those kinds of things. Now, no, you know, he does give us the ability and the, the, the mind to be able to, to make decisions such as, you don't, you know, you don't drive through a red light. And, you know, you, you, you apply your, your judgments and common sense and you, you abide by that. But that there are things in life where, um, you know, on a, on a practical note, we've just sold our house in Corrigan. And, and we could have got to the point where we had two people who were bidding off each other. And we could have, you know, we were looking the price that we put on the market at. And we could have just kept going, no, 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 let's just keep bungees off each other and get as much money as possible. And we didn't. We just simply said, you know, once, once someone gave us the price we put on the bit of paper, that was it. We didn't, we weren't greedy. We didn't, we didn't, you know, we could have kept going and got another, you know, couple of thousand pounds in it. But that's, that's not what, I don't think that's what God would want of us, to take, almost to take advantage of situations like that. So it's, but it's in the everyday thing that, that, that these things happen. And just going on then, so the video describes how Jesus holds all things together. And the video gave that illustration of laminin. And I would, I would encourage you to go online and search for it, L A M I N I N. And, and it is, it is quite remarkable just seeing it, because the first time you see it as a molecule, you think, wow, that's a cross. And what it does is it, it kind of, I was talking to Josh about it, because Josh is doing A level biology. And, and he knew about it. He said, yeah, it just, it holds everything together in your body, Dad. It just, just keeps things, everything together, skin and, and everything. I was like, wow. And then you think about this passage and, and this idea that Jesus, um, i- is, you know, is holding everything together. He is the Alpha and the Omega, Revelations 22. And I want to just go a wee bit further on this supremacy. And, and I'm gonna read, uh, I'm gonna read one passage. And I'm gonna refer to another, because you'll, you'll, you'll know, you'll know the second one, um, rea- really well. And I'm gonna start off with Hebrews 1, verses 1 to 4. And again, these will be in my notes. But it says this, "Long ago, God spoke to our ancestors in many and various ways by the prophets. But in these last days, he has spoken to us by a son whom he appointed heir over all things, through whom he also created the worlds. He is the reflection of God's glory and the exact imprint of God's very being. And he sustains all things by his powerful word. When he had made purification for, for sins, he sat down at the right hand of the majesty on high, having become as much superior to angels as the, as the name he has inherited is more excellent than theirs." And, and the thing about that passage is it informs us again that Jesus was appointed as heir over all things and that he made the universe. That Jesus is the radiance of God and he is the exact, um, representation of, of everything that God is. The second passage is Paul's writings to the, the Philippians. And again, you'll, you'll, um, you'll know this passage very well. And it, it's from Philippians 2, verses 5 to 11, where it says, "Let the same mind be in you what was in Christ Jesus, who, though he was in the form of God, did not consider equality with God as something to be exploited, but emptied himself, taking the form of a slave, being born of human likeness and being found in human form, he humbled himself." You know, you know that passage. So Philippians demonstrates a lot more, not just about the supremacy, but also the mercy. Jesus didn't see his position as a lord of someone, of something that he could then just take advantage of, that he was, he was supreme. It demonstrates the love, the depths of love that God has for his children, that he would be willing to stoop so low. And the, the next little bit that we're gonna do is, is the final part of this reading this morning. And, uh, uh, kind of around from verses 21 onwards. And if you look at that this morning in 21, it says, and it depends on your translation, "Once you were alienated from God and were enemies in your minds because of your evil behavior." And in my translation, it says, "And you who were once estranged and hostile in mind, doing evil deeds." And question based on that verse. What, do, would you have any thoughts about what it feels like to be alienated from God? And then ultimately, what does that lead to? So what does it feel like to be alienated from God?
Well, I suppose we as Christians would look at it, you were without hope. You were going the ways of the world. You trusted completely in yourself or anybody, except you didn't trust God. You were alienated from him because you didn't believe in him.
Yeah. And, and in some respects, what Paul is doing here to this church is he's saying, try and remember back to the point whenever you were without Christ. Remember what it was like. And, and then, and then he goes on to say, "He has now reconciled in his fleshly body through death, so as to present you holy and blameless and irreproachable before him." So he's saying, look at what you were. You don't need to fill these gaps with other things. You have got, you've got this, this relationship with God and nothing else exists. So I want to ask again, a personal question. Remember this is being recorded. So if you, if you don't feel happy about, um, sorry, Alan, were you, were you waving there? I might have missed you. No, no, that's okay. And yeah, so, so I know this is a personal question for the recording. If you don't want to say anything, then don't, don't, don't feel free. Don't, 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 uh, don't do so if you don't want to. And but if you consider, and it depends upon when you gave your life to Christ. But, um, consider what it was like before you came to know Jesus as your Lord and your Savior. How is life different now? And what are the biggest differences that you think that you can see and reflect on between who you were and what you are now?
I suppose it was something, something that George was saying. Um, when you didn't believe in the Lord, the difference that I saw was actually really, I was dead. You, you're like, um, like a robot. You just, you're living life daily in and out. And sometimes God was trying to talk to you, but you ignored it. And then, um, when you come to believe in Jesus, um, the joy and the peace that just flows into you is so wonderful. Even though some days, I suppose, because we are human, sometimes the devil tries very hard.
Yeah, he'll try and keep.
With me sometimes.
Yeah.
And but it's just the peace, it is the peace and the love. And that, you know, that God loves you no matter what.
Yeah. And that's, and that's back to what George said then, you know, uh, when he, that, that then brings you to the point that as you go through trials and go through the issues, that you have that sense of hope. You know, I, I quote it all the time, you know, especially at funeral services, where I'm doing a funeral this Friday. And, uh, and you know, for those that are in Christ, that they have an endless hope. Whereas those that are, that don't have Christ have a hopeless end. They can't see beyond, there's nothing that they can see beyond the grave. And the grave, as you look, as I look at the graves regularly, it is the most bleak, it's the most bleak picture that, that a person may have of, this is the end. But for those that are with Christ, it's an, it's an endless, it's an endless hope. And Sophie, were you gonna say something?
Well, you know, what the end of my sentence was gonna be really the same as Winnie's. For I learned about Jesus from an early age. And really, I think from I was about 14, I wanted to be a Christian. And I wanted, and I knew all about Jesus. And I worked really hard to follow the example of the leaders of the church and the organizations that I went to. But I still, I was striving away. And then it wasn't until actually quite a few years later, that I realized that I didn't actually know Jesus personally. I knew all about him and I knew that he would save me, but it, and when, as soon as I got to that stage, when the Holy Spirit came on me and, you know, assured me that I was saved by Jesus and born again. That's really when that feeling of peace and joy, I didn't have to strive anymore. I no longer had to look at other people and try to follow their examples. I just looked to Jesus. And it gives you such confidence for the, the rest of, of your life and the whole. And it gives you such confidence for the, the rest of, of your life and the hope. And a real sort of deep joy and patience that, you know, the striving's over. Jesus is my friend, he's my Lord and that's it.
Great, so, so, so encouraging, thank you, Sophie. And, and if we just now kind of move into thinking about where we were and who we are now. If we look at verse twenty-two, it says, he has, and again, translations will differ. He has now reconciled us in his fleshly body through death, so as to present you holy and blameless and irreproachable before him. That word irreproachable is kind of a word which means kind of without, without fault. How, how, how does that make you feel today? Knowing that through Christ's reconciliation, that we are presented as blameless, holy and, and without fault before God.
I remember one time hearing a story about this man and saying, how is he so sure that he was going to go to heaven and so on? He said, listen, I believe he said that in the last days, let's use it in this present, uh, world. You're brought into court and you're accused and Satan is the accuser. And he says, oh, he did this, he did this, he did the other. And the judge stands up, who is Jesus, and he says, case dismissed, I have forgiven him. Because he is repented, you know, and that's it. It, it, it's so, so hard for some people to believe that God would forgive you, but you have to repent first.
Yeah, and I've, I've heard a similar story around that, George, where, where the individual was about to be, was, was about to be fined, well, he was about to be, he was found guilty by the judge. But someone else came in, uh, and someone came in and said, no judge, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take this punishment, uh, that he deserves. But I'm gonna take it and that picture of, you know, before the judge, that, that someone else was willing, willing to take it. But, um, and anyone else, any, any thoughts on how that makes you feel today? I just can't stop grinning because it's just, it's so full of joy, it's, it's, it's just left you, I think.
One, one word, uh, coming that would sum it up for me, and it's, for me, it's a big word. And that's, it makes me feel included.
Included.
Hmm, yeah. And verses are always come to me, you know, Ephesians, uh, two, uh, eight and nine. It's by grace we are saved through faith and not that of ourselves. It is a gift of God and not of works lest any man should boast.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's about, sums it up.
Yeah.
It's a joy because we, we don't have to, you know, when you know you're saved, you're not, you don't have to worry about being good in that sense because it's nothing to do with yourself. It's Christ's goodness and it's because, and we know he's good and because his righteousness is what covers us. And that's it, that's all God sees when Jesus brings us in to the Father's presence, Jesus's righteousness.
Yeah. And you know something, I, I, I've, I've been greatly taken by this passage, um, uh, as I've been looking at for today. Um, and, and in some respects, I wonder, you know, should we not ever, every Sunday remind people of those, those, those words of verses twenty-one and twenty-two, you know, that we were enemies, but now, um, we're reconciled and, uh, you know, just, because that, that springs forth then worship, you know, um, and adoration and praise. So look, let's, let, let me just finish off. So Jesus reigns supreme over all creation, that's what we've said, all things were created through him and for him. He rules over the seen and the unseen, the physical and the spiritual. From the foundation of the world, he's the authority over the created realm. And by defeating death, Jesus rules over it. And he's made a way for us to be reconciled to God. His sacrifice, um, his sacrifice kind of firms up how supreme he is. And for our salvation, um, uh, to, to our work, to our thoughts, Jesus has authority over it all. And whenever it comes to reflection, I've, I, I said last week, if you have the time stood after this call, um, take five minutes, five or 10 minutes, just to reflect on what we've just done. Um, and reflect on, on this. We, we owe Jesus, we, we owe our lives to Jesus and what he's done for us. And so the question is this, are we living in a way that reflects that the truth of what he has done for us? Are, are, are we, uh, are we ensuring that he has an authority over all, you know, every aspect, allowing for our brokenness, um, every aspect of our lives and our decisions every day? And do we reflect that then, that freedom that we have in our daily life? So just think about that. Um, take time to consider in the week ahead, whether our, our lives reflect the supremacy of Jesus. A life surrendered to his authority isn't ruled by fear or swayed by opposition. Instead, it's characterised by faith, perseverance and hope. Now, in, i- i- if you, uh, don't have the notes in front of you now, you can go, um, onto, as I said, onto the website. Uh, on under latest news, you'll see, um, all the little bits in this and, and, and half an hour I'll put up today as stuff. But there's a participants guide and in today, it has this little section called Live It Out. And I really think it's important, uh, and I've been, I've been kind of reminded of that, uh, through something else, uh, last week, that we can study, we can study all the passages of scripture all day long. But if we're not living this out, if we're not taking God's word and living it out every day, then it's just this big academic exercise that kind of, that seems to do us a world of good in our brains, but nowhere else. So in the Living Out section, it gives possible ideas for the week ahead. One, pray. So ask God to reveal the areas of your life where you need to submit to his authority, okay? Next one is, is to, to list, in order, in, in order to read back through this passage from Colossians one, one through to twenty-three, list all of the attributes of Jesus that's mentioned in these verses. And then take a minute to reflect on who Jesus is. Um, the next one would be to sit and write out your testimony. Write out the story of how, um, you were lost, uh, and then you were found. Um, and focus on what life would have been like, um, if Jesus hadn't come into your life. And then be bold enough to share that story with someone. I know that George would be someone who it wouldn't, it wouldn't require him even a second um, to, to think about doing that. But for some of us, we might find that a challenge to get alongside. You know, for me, as I think about that, I think, have I ever sat with my brother, Jeff? And have I ever sat and just shared with him how, how Jesus came into my life? Um, and that was from someone, he was very much in, in Sunday school and all the same as me and did the same things, but something different happened. And the next one, which would definitely not be what I would do, it wouldn't be in my ability to do this, but be creative. Um, and make something to remind yourself of the supremacy of, uh, Jesus and creation. For, for, for me, um, I saw a photograph yesterday of friends of mine in England. And they had this lovely photograph, uh, with their new baby. And they were in a forest where there's loads of golden brown leaves all around them. You know, that, that's, that statement of, of creation and, and all, all that happens in the autumn. Um, and I just thought to myself, you know, just to be able to pick up those leaves and just look at them and look at all the golden colours and whatever, and to be reminded of how supreme God is. And then the final one, which I suppose I would do as well, would be to get a song, maybe a song that you can think of or a hymn, an old hymn that you can think of, uh, and listen to it and consider the different ways in which, um, God, it reminds you of God's supremacy and, and what he's done for you, okay? Um, so let's, uh, let's finish off, um, with prayer. Um, and maybe today, could I ask, um, could I ask George, would you finish off in prayer for us? Just unmute yourself there, good. Great.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for your word. Your word which passes all understanding. Oh Lord, let it be a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. And as we read it, Lord, day to day, oh Lord, through the power of your Holy Spirit, help us to understand it and to use it for your purpose and to your glory. For I ask these things in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen. Folks, I hope you've enjoyed this morning. Um, in terms of next week, if you, you know, if you want to know what the, uh, passage is for next week, again, the guy, the little guidance notes I'll give you, but it's, it's Colossians one, twenty-four. And it's through to chapter two, verse five. So Colossians one, twenty-four, through to chapter two, verse five. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, folks. Have a good day, bless.